Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, June 16th, 2022. Time is 2:03 PM. And we will turn it over to our city court for a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson is excused. Councilmember Lykes.
Here.
Councilmember Runberg.
Here.
Councilmember Storseth.
Here.
And Councilmember Wook.
Here.
We have six of seven councilmembers present.
Okay, great. Well, we will go right into our first discussion item. I know we have some guests with us, but I think we'll have Public Works Director Jeff Langhelm start us off.
Thank you, Mayor. As noted in the study session for this topic that was provided, the city and the city's design consultant, DCG, and the local commission fishing community have been talking for a while about the commercial fishing home port float design down at Antich Waterfront Park. We are currently, we had a meet, we developed 30% drawings, we had a meeting with commercial fishing folks and received their input and then developed the 60% drawings that were provided in part as part of your packet. If it looked like some things were missing from the drawings, they were, we didn't provide all the details and everything else. What we have was available, if you want to, there might have been a reference to something you missed it. I cut those out because it was a very large file to transmit. So if you'd like more information, can definitely get that to you. So the work we've completed today is 60% design plans. We have plans, specifications, and an estimate. We have now submitted these plans and the permit applications to all local, state, and federal agencies. And we are, at today's study session, going to be, I want to be able to present an overview of where we are with the plans. I see Andy Babbage is here. I don't, there was possibly other commercial fishing operators going to join us. They are here to ask questions too, if you'd like. Also provide additional input, but we think that we've captured everything that the commercial fishing operators had requested of us when we met out on site. Gosh, I think it was either end of April or first part of May. And so what I was hoping to do, unless there's any questions at this point, I was going to jump right into the design plans and just quickly do an overview of the plans. But any questions at this point? Okay. Bring those up. Let me see, there's a lot of things on my screen here. Okay, hopefully you can see an overview of the site plan itself. This looks, I'm sure, very familiar to all of you. We have Antich Waterfront Park, the upland, that was the phase one area. We have phase two, which is Community Paddler's Dock. That's now showing as completed in these drawings. And then we're on to the next phase three, which is the commercial fishing home port floats. This next drawing is just an overall plan of the dock itself. This is based on the alternative G back in June of 2021 that council approved through the resolution. It has 17 slips. Most of these slips are 60-foot slips. You can see the dimensions on here, 60-foot. And then 50-foot on the, 52-feet separation here, and then 50-feet as you're getting closer. And then an 80-foot slip on the very outer float. So you have, you can add more to 80-foot vessels, one on either side. That was, and then some side ties here as you get closer into shore. That totals are still, our goal is to have 17 slips available, and that's what we have here today. Jumping quickly, stop me anytime if you have any questions. I'm just going to rattle through these plans here. So this is just an overview of what it should look like on on high tide and low tide. So you'll notice it says here lowest observed tide minus 4.3. If you were down at the bay at all today, you at 12:50 or so, or yesterday at about 12:30, you will have seen what a minus 4.3 tide pretty much looks like. We, yesterday and today, we had extreme low tides. We had some staff go down there and observe some things, but the intent and what you see here is that this float system will be in water at all times, will meet the minimum requirements per DNR and DFW to have at least seven feet of water at a zero tide. That means we can get in all tides, have boats tied up to this without them grounding. This is, I just throw in there a quick utility plan. This is utilities of watered sewer. There's pumpouts on the dock. So that's why it's tying into the existing infrastructure that we already built as part of the Phase One and Upland Pier facility. Just an extension of that utility plan view up to the end. Most of you don't have, I'm sure, many questions on that. And then, well, I guess that's all I had for these drawings. There's an electrical set. There's a whole lot of details, but again, I'm not sure how much interest there would be in seeing all that information. I'm going to jump right into the planning side and give you an update on where we are with all the permitting. Again, we apply, we have submitted all of our applications to the agencies. We did complete a macro vegetation survey. It's where two divers went out. And if you were down at Antich Park on Tuesday around noon, you might have seen a car parked down, a couple cars. And buoys and string or lines pulled all throughout the front of Antich Park, all the way to the Outer Harbor Line. We had divers out there. They were trying to identify, and they've done this for multiple years in a row. I think it's every couple of years, though. We are identifying the level of kelp that exists in this area. This is a plant that the jurisdictions look at and want to be able to protect. It is a plant that shows the health of the bay. And when we first embarked on our upland project, we had very little kelp on this site, meaning out in the waters in front of the site. But we're starting to see slow addition and growth of that kelp. So that's a benefit to the health of the environment, that we seem to be getting more kelp growing. I'm not sure, I'm not a scientist, so I can't say it's correlated to the 2010 extension of the sewer outfall out into Kovos Passage, but I think it's, there's a lot of reasons things are getting better, but one thing we have to be very aware of is as we are able to do whatever we can to stimulate the growth of things like kelp, we are now looking at this, and what this will do is we'll have to mitigate for it, because we're now going to have an overwater structure shading the kelp, which is not beneficial to the kelp. So this results from this macro veg survey are going to be added to the federal permitting application. And we'll see what the federal permit agencies say that we might have to add on to our project to mitigate for any impact we would have to that kelp. Other mitigation includes, as you probably know, the Jerkovich Pier was not demolished as part of the advanced mitigation project last year. Running into January of this year. That pier is still there, ready for mitigation. And we know that when we had that conversation in November and December about advanced mitigation at the site, that they we weren't guaranteed that that pier could be used for mitigation. But one thing that staff had said is we didn't think that that was enough mitigation for this project, but we haven't gotten into all the details. After we got into the details in January, February, and March, we found that the mitigation for, and this was also the Community Paddler's Dock, we found out the mitigation for these, this site now through the federal government is about at a five or six to one ratio, meaning for every foot of square foot of coverage we have over water, we have to mitigate five to six times that amount. If you look at the square footage of the Jerkovich Pier versus the new float system, they're about equal, they're almost equal, but it doesn't work. I mean, it's not a one-for-one mitigation anymore. So we have to do significant additional amounts of mitigation elsewhere in the area. We are looking at not just the Jerkovich Pier, which we're keeping and going to be including that. We're looking at other mitigation that includes beach nourishment. DCG, our consultant, and their staff are looking at options to enhance beaches along the shoreline of Gig Harbor in front of city parks. Ideally, that's where we're focusing right now, where we can also receive, through the enhancement, also receive mitigation credit. So that's the path we're going down now. That's a little more expensive than we thought. I'll talk about that when we get to the estimate. But those, that's what we're looking at, the Jerkovich Pier demolition and beach nourishment. So we still think we're on track to receive our permits from all agencies by spring of next year. But it's going to take a lot of diligence on staff's part and this consultant's part to follow with these up with these agencies, especially the federal agencies, to make sure that they are getting their questions answered and keeping our permits in front of them at all times. So any questions on permitting at this point? Okay. I'm going to get into the cost estimate. I can bring it up if you'd like. I don't know if everybody has it in front of them, or if you'd like me to bring it up on the screen. I can do either. Okay, I'll hold off on bringing it up unless somebody asks for it. As you saw on the on the cost estimate for the total project, it is well above what was budgeted in the 2022 budget. I kind of went through this a little bit in the memo, but just a quick overview is that construction cost estimate, and that's what I'll focus on right now. While it says $2.5 million, you add tax to that and it goes up to $2.75 million. So initially, we had, well, back when the feasibility study was completed, we had estimated this project at $1.1 million for a linear float with 11 slips. And no adjustment to the electrical system that was constructed as part of the Phase One. Then when we looked at, when we were going into develop the 2022 budget, we anticipated we would have taken down the Jerkovich Pier already on our separate project, and we anticipated we would not have as much mitigation as we do have, and not any of the electrical issues that we're looking at. And so we, we had a $1.5 million project budget established. Again, but now we have to, we didn't spend $150,000 on Jerkovich Pier, so that money is, and putting this in air quotes, available to us to use on this project. But we also did receive bids for the demolition of the Jerkovich Pier. And if you recall, those bids, there are three bids, they ranged from $128,000 to $234,000. So I'm not sure what we'll get when we come back, but as you probably saw in the estimate, the demo total was, is provided at $282,000, $283,000 plus tax. So that's going to be, we're maybe a little conservative on that, but again, with costs going up, we don't, we're using that number just to start with. Another big item that has changed for us, in addition, just, just getting into the details of the design engineering itself that has increased the cost is the electrical. Again, when this electrical was first estimated, it was estimated at a 30-amp service for 11 vessels. In, now that we have 17 slips, instead for serving 17 vessels, we also have more input that we should be having, providing 50-amp service to those fishing vessels. Larger vessels nowadays use 50, a lot more than we use 50-amp services instead of 30-amp services. So in order for us to provide 50-amp services, we need to upgrade the electrical to the site. Instead of having single-phase, I think it's a 200-amp panel, we have to increase that to a 400-amp panel that's three-phase. That means we need to put a pole probably on the site and bring down transformers and service wire. And then the cost of putting in three-phase transformers out on the dock adds to the cost in the estimate. So you saw probably on the total, all said and done, including construction administration, contingent contingency inspection, surveying, and tax, we're now at 3.3, almost 3.4 million dollars. We, again, some of that money, we have already, we can just reallocate from Jerkovich, but there's other ways I think that we can fund this, if there is still an intent to move forward with us. The commercial fishermen have alluded to a donation. I'm not going to speak to the value of that. I'll let them do that, but they have said that they want to commit some money to this. Also, I know that the commercial fishermen have been talking with Port of Tacoma. We were not successful with receiving grant funds from the Port of Tacoma for the design of this project, but I'm fairly comfortable we would receive grant funds from Port of Tacoma for the construction of the project. So at this point, I would hope that, and the commercial fishermen are talking with Port of Tacoma to see if there's a way to find a larger pot of money the port might have to help fund some of this project. Most of the grants we've received from Port of Tacoma, while they're valuable there in the $20,000 to $50,000 range, not anywhere near the millions of dollars that we're looking at for this project. Of course, we have the hospital benefits zone. The site is within the hospital benefits zone. It has paid for part of these projects before. We have, it's been the hospital benefits zone identifies projects like this. We have funds available in the HBC to pay for a portion of this. We also have park impact fees that can pay for this. I don't have a number at this point. But we do have impact fees that we could allocate towards this project. And then we had, of course, have general fund. Now, because of the timing where we are today and the permitting, we won't be able to complete this project this year, of course, as I said earlier. But I think that this is going to be a good discussion, and we're going to be able to get one more cost estimate from DCG before we get to a point where we're going to be adopting the 2324 budget. So I think that that would be a good time, unless there are significant concerns by council, to just try and find good revenue sources to fund the project. And then, like I said, we'll have a better cost estimate as we get closer to. So that's my update. I, again, I ran through that kind of quick. I don't know if Andy has anything to say, or if council has questions, but happy to answer what I can at this point. Councilmember Woo.
Yes, thanks, Jeff. Thanks for this presentation. So I have a couple of questions. The 3.4, 3.345, does that include all of the mitigation that we're going, because we may have to buy some mitigation? Is that what I'm?
Well, I hope we don't have to buy mitigation. That is an option to buy mitigation. I hope that we have enough beach nourishment, and between the Jerkovich Pier and the beach nourishment, do we have enough mitigation to complete our our project? So yeah, and then it does include that cost.
Okay. And then the second question that I have, which I guess Andy's here, are the fishermen happy with the way this is going?
Yeah, Jenny, yeah, you, you hear me okay?
I can.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, I mean, I think the, there were some improvements made in this 60% drawing and yeah, I would say it's looking really, you know, very functional, and there may be a couple small details, but I think it's looking great, you know, from a fisherman's standpoint.
Yeah, we really appreciate their input. I mean, they're the users of this. And so we, we've listened to locations of something like transformer locations, the side, the height of the, of the free wall, the free board on the float systems, some of the ways that the vessels and their fenders will tie up and make sure we don't lose fenders underneath docks and pop fenders like that, and also to add something to the pier itself so that vessels can tie up to that outer edge of the pier, not just the side. So some, some of those are, and again, the electrical services too. So I think that, I hope, I've had a couple of comments already on some minor things that we can adjust as we proceed towards 90%.
Thank you. Answered my questions. Thanks.
Great. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you. Well, it's looking good, and I'm so excited to see this out in the bay. I wanted to know, Jeff, and this is probably too preliminary, if you'd had any conversations with Mary Damaris of, at the Waterfront Alliance, you know, we're part of that National Maritime Heritage Area now, which is a really big deal, and maybe, maybe there's some funding through that, because it's such a good fit with what we're trying to do here in Gig Harbor, preserving our working waterfront.
Yes, no, that's very, very true. That is a grand opportunity that Dale Lern and Matthew Kio and I have touched on. It's something I should work with, make sure I catch up with Matt and Dale on, but that is something that we have been looking at also. And as we get closer to the budget, we'll let you know if that's a good, good option. Yeah.
Great.
Okay. That's all I had. We will, we'll just continue to proceed and be in touch, fishermen, with this design, and then as we get updates on permitting or anything else, we'll be back in touch.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you so much, Jeff, and thank you to our guests for being here. Thank you, Andy, for being here. Was there anyone else that needed to be introduced for any of these other agenda items, Jeff, that you have on here?
I don't think so. I don't recognize anybody else in the attendee who needs to speak to the other agenda items.
Okay, thank you. I wondered, I didn't recognize the names either, so I just wanted to make sure I wasn't forgetting anybody. Okay, so we'll move on to our second item, which is the sewer utility extension agreement request, and this is also our public works structure, Jeff Langhelm.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to start this item with just a quick overview of what sewer utility extension agreements are and why we have them. So the request you, that was submitted from property owners, two different property owners who are located outside city limits, but within the urban growth area. The requests were made to connect to the city's sewer system through a utility extension agreement. There's a chapter in our code, I'm pretty sure it's 1334 is the chapter in the code that allows this, and it kind of spells out how someone located in the UGA could connect the city sewer. And so that's what these two property owners did. We just were bringing these together because they were submitted very close together and thought it would be good to just lump them together. But they're not connected. So the city is authorized to provide water and sewer service to all properties located outside city limits, but within its service area. For water, there's a clearly identified service area that it has nothing to do with the city limits or the UGA. But since we're not talking about water utility extension agreements, we'll just set that aside. For sewer, the city's service area is the urban growth area. So we are allowed and authorized to provide sewer service to anyone within our UGA. This is allowed and authorized by state law. There's an RCW, I think it's quoted in there. And then it's also allowed per city code. That's chapter 1314. One of the key benefits that these properties have that are located in the in the UGA is that they can receive city sewer, and so they can construct densities that are city density. While it's not mandatory for the city to provide sewer services, sewer service to these properties, the city would need a clear reason to not allow connection to city or to properties located in the city's UGA. One of those reasons might be if we're running out of treatment capacity. It's not mandatory that we allow them to connect, but we are obligated to allow them to connect. As we talked about in the study session memo, the treatment plant does have plenty of capacity. The treatment plant and was built as it sits today to be able to meet the current treatment capacity for all properties located within the UGA. And that includes the UGA of East Gig Harbor, because when the comp plan was put, wastewater comp plan was put together, the city had not yet removed East Gig Harbor from the UGA. So we have plenty of capacity currently, depending on what happens in the future with nutrients and everything else, well, that might change. But if the city does not wish to provide sewer service to properties for the other reasons, or for, for any other reason, typically our response, and the city attorney's not here, but typically our response is then the city should remove properties from the urban growth area. Therefore, we're not obligated to serve those properties with city sewer. You will note in the utility extension agreement that were provided with the packet that the developer must construct any necessary improvements to connect to the city sewer system. This could be a side sewer from the building to a gravity sewer out in the main. It could be the gravity sewer out in the out in the roadway to connect it to the lift station, or it could be the lift station itself. It's any one of those. And then the developer who submits should be looking at that, and as part of their hydraulic report will identify how they're going to connect to the city sewer system. So they're very aware of their costs to construct city infrastructure. Once a lot of those infrastructure is in place, not sites, but everything else, then that will be provided and signed over to the city to own, operate, and maintain. Other costs the developer would incur, and this is also identified in the utility extension agreements in your packet, is the payment of general facilities charges and payment of rates and fees once they're connected. You'll note it's in code. It's also noted here, the general facilities charge for the property would be at one and a half times the in-city rate. So they're going to pay a premium to connect to city sewer. They also would have to pay before the city records the utility extension agreement. A capacity commitment payment, which is 15% of the general facilities charge that's in place today. That would give them three years essentially to connect to the city's system. If they don't connect within three years, they either lose this utility extension agreement, or they have to pay the full general facilities charge that's in place today. That's the commitment payment itself. Identified utility extension agreement. So at some point, even if they do pay the full freight for all of the, to reserve the service and the treatment capacity, if they do come in after three years, let's say five years out, and the general facilities charges increase, they're going to pay the difference before they connect in the city system. So they're going to pay, just like everyone else, the amount of the general facilities charge in place at the time they physically connect to our system. So that's a quick overview of specifically sewer utility extension agreements. Any questions on those? So the two that you have before you specifically, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Woo, you have your literal hand raised.
Sorry, sorry. I do have a question. In the very beginning of this presentation, you mentioned something about density. So, and I, I didn't hear all of that. Could you go back over that again, please?
Sure. So let's say there's a property located in the urban growth area. If they don't connect the city sewer, they have a, they don't, aren't able to have the density of development that they would have if they connected the city sewer. They have to have onsite septic, so that takes up land and and other things. And there's different set of codes, and I can't speak to that. Katrina might, might want to as a, with her planner background, but that's a county rule that works with the city too, but there's different densities that are allowed.
So is there any way that we could allow them to connect to sewer and yet, and yet conform to our city density rules?
That will be, that is possible, and we would need a management agreement of the urban growth area with Pierce County in order to have that happen, which is planned to happen hopefully this year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Runberg.
Yes, just maybe to alleviate concern of Councilmember Woox. The one property is right across the street from my house. It's at 9509, and I'm 9510. And the density of that is probably one home on three-quarters of an acre, and that gentleman has no intention of building anything else on that property. So it's not like he's a mini-developer or anything. So I'm certainly in favor of these things. If, you know, I'm glad he's not, I'm glad he's going to be off a septic, because it is close to the water. And a lot of issues happen when septic is close to the water. So I'm certainly in favor of the 9509. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm just going to talk briefly about the two utility extension agreements that we have before us today. That's the 9509 Randall Drive and one out off Canterwood Boulevard Baker Way. I believe it's 40 residential townhomes. Um, I can, I, 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 I think there was, I hope I provided a map. I hope I provided a map with the uh, packet. I'm going to share that on the screen, just so everybody can see it. So here's ninety-five oh nine Randall, and then here is uh, the one out on Canterwood Boulevard at Baker Way. Any questions on location? You can see the red is city limits, so you can see they're just outside city limits. Councilman Redenson.
Sorry, not on location, but Jeff, did you say that there's already forty townhomes there, or are they planning to build forty townhomes there?
Plan to build forty townhomes. Here, I can zoom in a little bit. Yeah, you can see it's, it's all green. Trees. Councilman, or Councilmember Barber.
Yeah, I, my question is probably kind of a follow-up to um, Councilmember Rodenbergs, and Councilmember Dentson may also have some insight on this, because I know she lives right there as well. But is this one home on that street, or are there more homes on that street that might also want to add to the sewer? And at what point do we get into a capacity issue? I'm assuming, you know, one home at a time is a capacity issue for the water treatment plant and sewage, but do we need to worry about that in the future?
Well.
That's kind of two questions.
Yeah, um, right now, uh, we, we are not worrying about that in the future. Um, it, it is only one home, and if the adjacent home wants to connect, not an issue. Let's just say that there gets to be many homes that want to connect, and the lift station can't handle the capacity. Then that's up to the developer to pay for those upgrades to the lift station, not up to the city, not up to the city ratepayers.
So is it up to, on Randall, would it up, be up to those homes? Those homeowners? Because that's not a developer situation.
Well, it, it, it would only be on capacity. If it's a maintenance issue, that is on the city. Let's just say the air, let, let me zoom in a little bit to that Randall. Um, but you know, uh, let me unpause for a quick second. Stephanie, you had your hand raised. And I, we got on, moving on to something else. Uh, Stephanie Sable with the.
Oh, that's okay. So currently, I was going to say that Canterwood property, we just found out. Um, they're requesting those townhomes, but they're um, plotted for commercial only, so we're going to go through a.
Uh, Stephanie, Stephanie, your computer microphone cut out. They're, they're plotted for, they're, they're requesting townhomes, but what?
They're plotted for commercial only. So they're going to go through a plot revision, so if unsuccessful, they would be reverting back to commercial.
Okay, okay.
Which could update their application in the future.
Yeah, okay. For, for sewer-wise, that's, that's neither here nor there, probably. It's just capacity in that space based on their, they're flowing by gravity, and as long as they have gravity capacity, then that's up to them. So um, I'm going to let me see, let me see what I've got open here. Um, let me turn something on real quick. Um, I'm going to give an example here, real life for the Randall Drive. Let me turn on Manhole Flops Stations. Um. And um, existing gravity sewer. So, okay, sorry, let me turn this stuff on, so none of you have to see me clicking buttons. Okay, so I'm going to turn on our GIS system here. Hopefully you can see this now. Okay, so ninety-five oh nine Randall is right here. Um, and you can see there's already gravity made in Randall Drive down to the end of city limits.
Okay.
So this person would just essentially have to do a tie-in side sewer, tie-in to the system. Let's say this property here wanted to develop just in a hypothetical example, and they want to put um, forty townhomes on this property. We would have to assess to see if they exceeded the gravity sewer capacity, or they would provide us their engineer by just a calculation, make sure they didn't exceed our gravity sewer capacity. And they didn't exceed lift station one capacity, which is right here, and it's actually right here in Crest Creek Park. As long as it didn't exceed gravity sewer capacity here, or lift station one capacity, or lift station two capacity, because lift station one pumps into lift station two. As long as they didn't exceed the capacity, they would just enter into utility extension agreement, to connect the sites, or it'd be done. But if some, if this development exceeded the capacity of any part of our infrastructure, they would be required to upgrade the infrastructure to meet the capacity that they're adding to the system.
Okay.
Did that answer your question, Councilmember?
It does. Thank you.
Okay, good. Uh, Councilman Rothenberg.
Yeah, I uh, just maybe to answer Councilmember Barber's question. Uh, and, and you did a pretty good job of it, Jeff. Uh, the larger parcel to the south, uh, it would be very difficult to uh, to build there, but the parcel just south of ninety-five oh nine, uh, that one, uh, I'm director, Newt, I'm sorry, city administrator, Newton might know better, but I'm, I think he's already in discussions with the city about uh, building a home there, a singular home. Uh, but he's been talking about that for, for years and never seemed to get around to doing it. So there is the possibility, I guess, that at some point he would want to do the same. That's all, just my little insight.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Redenson?
Thanks. I'm not even sure what question, how to ask this question. But you know, this whole, this area, and I'm not sure where the lines were, was removed from the UGA. But now they, I mean, I'm just confused, because now they can still access our sewer. We don't have a lot of um, waste, right? They can.
No. No, they cannot. Here, let me, let me add the UGA onto this now. And then, but oh, you have to be in the UGA to connect to our sewer. You, we are not allowed to connect outside of the UGA unless there's a health emergency.
But I thought you said that this was out of our UGA now.
It, it, well, uh, this parcel is not the ninety-five oh nine. Let, let me add the UGA here.
Well, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Let me see here. Sorry, you're going to see everything going on here. Oh, wow, how far down is you? Oh, you know, it's under planning, isn't it?
It's always harder to find things when people are watching.
Yeah, is anybody watching me do this?
Well, because I remember we denied somebody um, connection to the sewer that's further down this road, because they had just, we, you know, it had just been removed from the UGA. Okay.
Yeah, okay, so.
And I'm fascinated to watch that.
So Mike Simmons has made it so that the UGA shows up as this hot, purple highlighted area. So, and, and so that's the, that's outside city limits, but within UGA. So you can see this property here that I pointed to as our hypothetical example is in the UGA. But this area you can see is no longer in the UGA. So I know we had these discussions a while ago, and I know staff expressed their concerns, but things like Rebecca Shores will always be on septic. Per Councilmember Rothenberg's concern, that's a lot of septic loading. But I know we had these discussions, I don't want to open up like this conversation again, but this is where you are no longer allowed to connect this sewer.
Okay, thank you. That, that makes sense to me now. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so um, what we have is we have these two utility extension agreements. As Stephanie said, commercial or townhomes, so they're going to iron that out. And then we have this one uh, res- single-family residential lot. Um, plan is right now to, unless there's comments, questions, concerns that would not want this to come back, I'm planning on uh, working with Stephanie to have this wrapped up and brought forward to city council at their June twenty-seventh council meeting for request to adopt the proposed utility extension agreements for sewer. Councilmember Wook.
I would like to see if we can get the uh, density, especially on those forty uh, on Canterwood Boulevard. If we can restrict them to having the same density that's what's in the city, city codes before I vote on this.
Katrina, do you want to take this?
So there's, the, there's a couple of things at play here. So we just did the UGA annexation study or analysis, and that's going to be coming forward for approval for council. And so we understand that under a GMA framework, that we have urban growth areas that are still intended to take urban level of growth as opposed to the rural area, which is intended to have the larger lots. And so within that, we need to ensure that the UGA develops at urban level densities. Um, but again, we can have those discussions with the county and potentially have them review the UGA lands against our city regulations, essentially having um, their reviewers review against our codes. We do need a, an agreed upon um, understanding of how that would occur, and there may be some cost sharing necessary if there's additional work that would be required by Pierce County staff. And that again is very typical through an urban growth area management agreement. That will take some time to come to, to come to pass. And I think what Jeff, the request that Jeff is bringing forward now, um, are decisions that would need to be made prior to the time when we could negotiate and a UGMA with the county.
I mean, I'm not asking for less density, though it would be nice, but I'm under the impression that they can have a greater density in the UGA. Those forty townhomes would be a greater density than what we allow in the city. Is that correct or not?
I would have to look at, at the, at which lot we're speaking of, but in general, for instance, how we no longer allow uh, developers or property owners to utilize critical areas, steep slopes, et cetera, as part of their net developable acres. The county does. So our, our manners of calculating density are different between, from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. And that would be something else that would be up for negotiation with the county once those discussions start.
So, but if we vote on this on June twenty-seventh, then makes no difference really, because if the county says no, then we're going to get a higher density in that area. Is that right?
Jeff, what are the options and what are the deadlines? For this particular record, type of request?
Um, I would have to, I'd feel better to have a conversation with city attorney before I answer that. Um, typically, w- we, we have a process that we've gone through, um, and it, uh, yeah, we, we're in the middle of that process right now, that we don't have and wait for these types of uh, other agreements to be put in place. But I think that it's best to probably have that conversation with the city attorney before we uh, proceed.
Before you proceed, what?
One way or another.
Or voting?
Before we proceed one way or another.
Okay, so, so we will not be looking at this on January twenty-seventh.
Well, I, I think. Sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
I say, I, I, I can't say that. I mean, if, if the, if we have a conversation with city attorney and, and, and he suggests that, recommends that we proceed forward with this request in our normal process, yes, it will be on the June twenty-seventh agenda. But if he says, well, we should stop, pause, and take a look and have a conversation, then yes, we will pause and, and look a little further.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the Randall property, but, but uh, you know, when we have more density than what our city allows, it's not just about the houses, it's about the cars and the streets that we get nothing from the county for. And so I think we need to, and people are going to start asking, well, what the heck? And uh, if it's not conforming to our city codes, and yet we, they want to use our sewer, I mean, it's nice to charge them one and a half times. But really, I think we should be looking at uh, whatever we do should conform to our city codes before we give them full range to do whatever they want.
So it, what I would say in consideration of this is that the city is the only uh, wastewater provider out on the side of the bridge. And so that is an expectation of having the urban growth area, that if, if items come in, there would be an agreement for sewer, because we are the only provider of sewer. Um, additionally, the codes for Pierce County were adopted and not appealed by the city at that time. And so I believe our way of proactively moving forward would be to work collaboratively with the county, as we've talked about, under the urban growth area management agreement. And uh, which would allow for corrections uh, moving forward. However, I would have a concern of not approving this at this time, because we are the wastewater provider. And uh, and the project that is going or proposed to be going on the county land is uh, apparently conforming to the county codes at this time. So we would not want to put ourselves in a liability situation of withholding sewer when we are the sewer provider, if the project that's being proposed is consistent with the legally um, adopted code currently. So I, I hear what, what I hear your position, I would just caution us in, in making a decision that could put us at, at a position of risk.
And I don't want to do that, but it's earlier, I think I heard Jeff say that we don't have to do this.
Oh, we, yeah, we don't have to do it if we have a justified reason of why we, for example, my example was, we don't have capacity.
Okay, but because our code doesn't conform, it's not a reason not to do this. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, respectfully, that's what, that is what I'm saying at this time, the, that we are the sewer provider. And that we can show that we have available capacity to serve an urban, an urban parcel, and because the development is conforming with the county's code, and we did not object at the time that that code was passed, that we would not have standing to say no at this time, lest there be an environmental concern or a capacity concern. Um, although, although I, I do understand we're coming from Councilmember Wook, and we will be working with the county on that urban growth area management agreement this year, and the county is expecting that.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Councilmember Barber.
I just wanted to mention, there's a Kevin Vibe in the attendee list who has his hand raised. And based on someone else in attendance, it looks like he might be from a construction company and maybe tied to the project. I thought we might want to see what he has to say. And now his hand is down.
Yeah, we don't generally have public comment, but.
Yeah.
So.
Maybe Josh told him that.
Maybe.
Okay.
Um, any other questions for, for Jeff about this particular subject?
Yeah, I would like to get a, hopefully at the June twenty-seventh meeting, we can get a statement or something from our attorney that we have to do this.
If it, when it's presented to council, whether that's June twenty-seventh or sometime in the future, of course, at the council meeting, the city attorney's office will be represented, and they will be able to uh, provide some input on it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Um, moving right along to your next item, if you're ready for the active CIP update.
Sure, yeah.
This is, this is the Jeff Langham meeting today.
It happens. Okay, um, typical, as, as we typically do, um, I have provided the uh, updated capital improvement schedule for active projects. And then after that is our uh, capital improvement project, public outreach matrix, to just show where we are with projects that might be impacting the public. Um, so I'm going to bring that up on screen. Just remember, anything that's highlighted has changed from before. Um, I'm able to remember most of those things that changed, but uh, maybe not all of them. Okay. Okay, hopefully you can all see my screen now. Okay. All right, um, I'm going to highlight mostly just the ones that, well, I'm going to touch on mostly just the ones that are highlighted with changes, but stop me if I skip over one and there's no change. So, okay, so Scansy Nethead structural repairs, uh, we sent out the construction a little bit. We are actually just this afternoon had a quick conversation with Marcos McGraw on this one. Um, our consultant has some concerns, some structural concerns, if we were to add some sheathing onto the roofing before we re-roof it, uh, having to do with dead loads, uh, the, the static loads uh, on the structure itself. So we're going to have to look into that one a little bit more, and maybe coming to you at a study session in the future to have a conversation about how we want to proceed. Um, uh, Sports Complex, um, we are having, I've, there's no change to the schedule here, but I do want to know, it was noted in the public outreach document, my glasses for this, but uh, we are having an open house scheduled on the twenty-eighth of this month from five to six thirty in the civic center lobby. We're going to be talking about some uh, key features for the facility. Uh, at a minimum, it's going to be conversations about uh, the performance stage. We have four different options for what the performance stage is going to look like. Uh, the architect has come up with right now, we're going to refine those a little bit and have them for the public on the twenty-eighth. And then looking for input on the uh, playground for both the tot lot and the five to twelve range, uh, looking for input on anything from what items are within that uh, playground equipment and colors and so on and so forth.
Jeff, real quick, can you see hands, or do you want me to call on people when they raise their hand?
Um, I can see them. If I miss them, definitely jump in. I, there was a hand raised, but it went down, so. Um, I can see them. If I miss them, definitely jump in. I, there was a hand raised, but it went down, so.
Yes, I saw that. I saw that go down. Thanks, Jeff.
Yep, thank you for helping. Uh Austin Orring Art, um, this one right now, we actually are going to have to probably extend this out a little bit. Um. The uh, as if you've driven past or walked past her, you'll see there's foundation there. There's, there is some, some, a lot of work that's being done. We are trying to get the base plate that attaches between the found concrete foundation of the artwork. Uh, there were some modifications on how that was going to be manufactured. That was a city decision to do some modifications. Um, we are going to be uh getting that in fabrication with the contractor very soon. It has to be galvanized. That's a long lead time. And so we're going to be moving forward with this, but there is going to be a delay a little bit on this. I've been talking to the artist. Uh, we've been in communications uh through a couple of emails with the Pialb tribe and uh with our own uh tourism communications folks. So we're going to try and uh. Find a few options for an unveiling at some time at the end of July, maybe now the first part of August. Uh, Core Fishing Homeport Design, we touched on that. Um. Electric vehicle charging stations, uh, just with all of the vacancies we have in Public Works right now, uh, that is something that uh. Our operations group had to set down and just focus on other priorities right now. Uh, we do hope to pick that up very soon. We recognize that we're going to have electric vehicles soon and we need to get those charging stations in, but we haven't said we're not going to get it done this year, but we have. Uh, put it on pause for now. Councilmember Rhodberg.
Yes, I think we talked about it once. I'm not sure I remember the answer. Uh, are those charging stations going to charge the person that or or is there a fee?
And the charging stations we're putting in at the civic center and. We're also putting in charging stations at the operation center. Neither one of those will be uh available for the general public. These are intended to charge uh city staff vehicles only.
Okay.
I mean, so I need, we need to figure that out, but we are going to need to have either a code we have to put in. Uh, that'll only restrict it to those who have a code with the for city staff.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Uh, Boat Visitor Center Rehabilitation, that's uh slowly proceeding forward, but we're making progress. Uh, Public Works Operations Center, we are out to bid with this and that was quite a relief. I want to say thank you very much to Marine Whitaker and George Flanagan for making that happen. Uh, Marine Marine stepped in while Marie George was unavailable. She, Marie is the advent on that. Marie and George have been working on this tirelessly. Uh, but uh Mo jumped in and helped get that out to bid, so that is out to bid. We plan on opening bids on June thirtieth. And presenting uh contract for award at the July eleventh council meeting. Right now, the consultant's uh. Est- estimate for construction costs is within budget, so I hope it stays that way. We'll see. I'm sure we're already getting a lot of interest on this, a lot of contractors uh asking questions, so progress.
At what do you think that that would be uh ready to be opened? Does it say on here?
Well, yeah, construction we say will be done by June of twenty twenty three.
Excellent.
It, uh, at this point, we hope. Again, with the economy the way it is and and uh long lead times on some material items. When we award the project, we'll have a better idea of how long it will take to get some of those long lead time items. We, this is, this is a a maybe too optimistic, but uh we do hope to be able to have concrete poured and be out of the ground uh. This fall and then start working on the actual above ground. Uh, items and have it roofed and ready to start putting in the final materials uh and have it dried in. Hopefully by midwinter. Councilmember Rhodberg.
Yeah, is there any way on these long lead items that uh the city could purchase them? Uh, before we let the contract and then take them out of the contract for the. Uh, person that's actually doing the construction, that give us a a head start, maybe?
Yes, and we do do that in some cases. Um, this would be, uh, there's always challenges and risks when we do that. Um, and then we we essentially lose the ability to provide liability to the contractor to make things work. It opens up the contractor to be able to say that. Uh, because the city purchased it, they didn't, that the the materials were not compatible or there was an issue, uh, damage or whatever. And uh, and that they're not responsible and they take things out of warranty usually when they don't buy the materials. So we do do that occasionally, but we try not to in most cases.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh Harborview Stinson, uh, that is proceeding along. You've probably seen them pouring concrete in the driveway, coming up out of Eden Boat. Um, uh, and doing a lot of landscaping. So uh, that's going to continue uh for the next uh few weeks and uh we think that we're going to be able to be done with this project on schedule, which was mid-July originally. You'll see August eighth here. Councilmember Rook.
Yes, we have a a document for operations in that of the of the brick house, once that this sidewalk, once the driveway and parking spaces are in. How's that document coming along?
Um, it's proceeding. Uh, the boat shop and the city Katrina has uh got a a set of meeting for us actually tomorrow. So we we are starting to have those conversations uh again and will, I hope that we'll be able to proceed fairly quickly. So that when the building gets certificate of occupancy after the intersection improvements are deemed complete. Then we can uh move right into that.
So that's, we're looking at sometime in July for this, we think?
Uh, yeah, end of July, first part of August. I mean, this timeline, worst case scenario for the contract says August second.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Roselle Stinson, boy, we extended that out a little bit further. We are making slow progress on trying to uh. Get the last, come to the finish line on this one to be able to install those streetlights. Um, I really appreciate. Um, Kyle Neiman, who is now a field supervisor, I'm sure you've seen that email, uh, he is helping Aaron Holst to bring this all the way. Home and be able to get those streetlights in, but there's a lot of documentation because there's federal funding on this. It takes away a lot of our ability to uh make some decisions. Because they all have to be approved in this case by Wa- Washington State Department of Transportation, local programs and the federal government, so. Um, that's taking, we have to make sure that everybody buys off on any change that we do. Annual pavement maintenance and repair, um, you'll see a ward request at the June twenty seventh council meeting, so um, we anticipate we'll be able to get out. And start that construction. Um, there's a lot of ramps for crosswalks and a lot of other things, not just pavement maintenance, so we hopefully we can get out in July. If not in first part of August and then be done by October. Uh, we are working, Laura and I have been talking about this. I said this after the Borden Boulevard, which I'll touch on here in a bit. This annual pavement maintenance is our next big project. Councilmember Rook.
Yes, and the folks up in Gig Harbor North that wanted a uh crossing area with rapid flashing beacons in the discovery areas. Um.
Civic Avenue, yes.
Thank you. Are we, we're, are we going forward with that? Where are we on that?
We are. Um, it's not shown in the schedule here under the mid-block RFP cross systems. Uh, we have funding for it elsewhere. Uh, Katrina and I have talked about funding, so we've got that covered now. Um, but we're going to put it into the same schedule as this mid-block crossing system. It is likely going to become first on our list because of the tie to the school year opening in September of twenty twenty two. Um, but. Again, we have been. W- we're essentially, and I I might have seen it in the weekly updates last week, we are essentially only have eleven out of nineteen staff members in uh in operations. So um, it is difficult to get some of these things and then to add something new to our plate since they're going to be constructing it. That's another challenge. Um, but I think we can get there and but it it. We might not be able to, I mean, we're going to try and get the one on Pacific Avenue before school starts, but that's going to be the first one we get to this year.
Thanks. It'd be nice if this was listed somewhere, so I don't, I don't have to ask you. I can read it, right? So.
Well, I I could list it separately. I try and keep the titles of these projects to the same title that's in the budget for consistency, and since it's not in the budget, I didn't add it.
All right.
If you would like me to add it as its own unique project, I will do that.
I I just hate to keep bugging you about it, so.
Uh, easy to answer.
All right.
Okay, um. Burnham Drive Phase One A, uh, that's been extended out a little bit. There's some uh. You can see now we're we're going to be having this project constructed all the way to the end of next year. The the federal permitting is taking longer than we anticipated. Um, we may be before council soon. To have a conversation with council about this project, just to give an update on it in detail. Uh, I need a updated schedule from the consultant. Marcos has given me one, but I I'd like to learn a little more. Uh, but I want to be able to get some of the federal permitting done and out of the way. Uh, you will be seeing a consultant services contract amendment for this project because of the additional mitigation. Um, I'm trying to just fine tune some of the details. The first. Uh, go around came to me. It was quite expensive and I didn't quite see why it was so expensive for just a mitigation. Uh, addition, so uh, we're working through those details and then uh we'll be in front of you and hopefully can give you a schedule update at the same time we provide a con- a contract amendment. I'm going to skip forward here. Things are moving along on most fronts. Uh, water main that uh just got delayed. A little, um, but uh, we are now looking at construction uh. Summer and into fall. Uh, and then lastly, here on these changes, the slip lining, both this is a combined project for Stinson Avenue and and uh store sewer line and then Mountain View Place and Bernhardson Stormpipe, so. We, again, priorities, this was supposed to be handed off to an associate engineer. And we're just in without city engineer and without associate engineer, this just gets moved further out. Uh, we do have a little bit of the work started. But uh, not enough to keep it on schedule. And then lastly, utility rates study, um, of all the things that uh. Been not able to keep up with. This is one. This is in my court. It's not the consultant's court. This is something I just haven't been able to put enough time into at this point, though I have hoped to do that very soon and get back on track in July. I don't know, uh, that's all I had. I I could go through the public outreach document. I did want to touch briefly on, unless you had questions, I was going to jump right into the Borden Boulevard emergency repair, just a quick update on that. Okay, so um, you probably have seen the information related to our emergency repair. We've been talking with you since uh March about this project. We do have a window. We recognize this window is not ideal for school reasons. Uh, and and and, well, other reasons, but uh. With the consultant, sorry, the the consultant had said that we cannot have heavy rains enter the excavation site, otherwise that will cause further settling of the fine sands that they found in their investigation. So we have had to find a balance of finding a window for the contractor. Their subcontractors, they have two subcontractors, and that is dry. And so we think that we have found it, these light little showers don't have much impact. It's more of the heavy half an inch, one inch a day of rain that will impact us. We don't, even though we see some rain on Friday afternoon, maybe a little bit in Saturday morning, uh, we don't think that's going to negatively affect this project. But um, with the contractor schedule and the subcontractor schedule, we're trying to get all of this wrapped up, the eight, the um. Grinding, the excavation, the placement of some geotextile, the backfilling and the paving within four or five days. So in order for us to minimize impacts to the public and maximize the ability to get in and on this site. Uh, we did uh establish a complete road closure of westbound. Borden Boulevard between Peacock Hill and Olympus Way. We recognize there are going to be impacts. Um, we just appreciate patience and understanding in this. Uh, we've talked to the school district. They're very aware of it. They're not happy about it, but they said they can accommodate. So that's all we ask at this point. And uh, we hope to be able to get the roadway open back fully by Thursday of next week. But that road closure is going to start this Friday. Councilmember Liggins.
Yes, thanks, Jeff. Um, so I had a couple neighbors asking me, they use the Pierce Transit bus that comes down that road to get to community college or work. So um, if you could just address that so I can answer their questions.
Um, I don't have uh a rerouting yet from Pierce Transit. We are working with them. Uh, we have notified them and we're working with them to to find out what their route could be. Um, I I don't remember the transit. Uh, i- i- it heads westbound along. Borden Boulevard, I know. Both both ways, okay. Um, yeah, we might, uh, I'll I'll double check at the end of this meeting to see if uh Mo had a response yet from or Aaron had a response yet from Pierce Transit.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Uh, Councilmember Rook.
Jeff, I just want to say that I'm amazed that things are getting done with the lack of employees that we have and kudos to you. Uh, for leading this department, leading your department and getting it done. It is, it is amazing to me, so thank you so much for for taking it on and. I think that I certainly appreciate it. I'm guessing from the applause here that we all appreciate uh the. The burden that has been placed upon you and thanks, thank you so much.
Yeah, you're you're very welcome. I'm, it's it's a big team effort and uh everybody has stepped up. I mean, you look at uh Aaron Holst and uh Jeff Olson, Brandon Crossway, even with Kyle. Neiman moving from construction supervisor, field supervisor. I mean, he's he's got his feet in both court now and he's trying to do everything he can. Um, the crew down to treatment plant, where they're all getting ready for Daryl's departure now, so um, we'll we'll uh. Uh, and that with the HR support because um, uh, Shannon and Desiree are doing a great job uh getting us lined up for interviews and getting through interviews, so. It's just a team effort. We keep things going. We appreciate your patience and understanding when we don't get things done on time as we had, we would like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much, Jeff. Um, all these construction projects kind of back to back. I know people get a little cranky. Just don't go on Facebook. Let us, let us do that. Let us do that for you. Um, but one of the questions that someone did ask online, I never respond because I don't want anyone to know I even have a Facebook account, but. Do you um anticipate that it will be completed within that week timeframe or do you think it could go past that? That was something that. Several people asked, like, oh, is it really just going to be a week or is it going to turn into three months or?
Uh, I, Erin and I have been watching the weather forecast very closely.
Yeah.
They're, they, the contractor is going to excavate tomorrow. They said that if they feel like they need to work Saturday, they will be working Saturday also. They're working Monday. Um, they're working Tuesday. Their schedule shows them being open by Thursday. What will. Delay this, if anything, is if we have an unanticipated rain event come in and it causes damage to the subgrade. That uh, that will be just having to come back and fix later. Uh, that, that, that will extend it. Now, I have to say, I appreciate Jake Nelson. He is willing to be out there on Saturday if they are uh needing to. He's also going to already scheduled to come in on Monday. I, we, it's the June night, uh, Juneteenth holiday observer is observed, so. But he's going to be in on Monday. He's going to be in on Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday, so he's going to be tracking them very closely. This is a time and materials contract. That's not our typical contract. I mean, we pay close attention to contractors anyway, but we have to be able to document. Every time a truck comes up and dumps something, every time we have a person come on site, we have to document that we are paying them. Um, otherwise, uh, offer outing purposes just doesn't work, so we have to be there from the time the contractor arrives on site, time the contractor leaves, so. Jake has graciously volunteered again, uh, team member steps up and just does what needs to be done.
Okay, M and M's coming his way and yours. Councilmember Liggins.
Just a quick question. If you could just clarify the hours of construction, sometimes people come out and say they were making noise at this hour. So is it like seven AM to nine PM or or do you know what hours?
I think it's seven AM to eight PM is the typical construction hours on Monday through Friday. Weekend is eight to eight. Um, I can tell you if the contractor says that they have an issue and they want to work past the ending time. I'm going to allow them to do that.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, great. Thank you so much, Jeff, for all three of these presentations. Really appreciate you. Um, and our next presentation is from our city clerk, Josh Sticker, for the selection of. Ad hoc committee to interview the planning commission applicants.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, we have two vacancies on the planning commission. Um, one is currently our chair, Greg Hoeksmo, and the second is um. I've forgotten her name now. Uh, she just stepped down. Katrina, can you help me out? Sorry about that.
Amanda Bennett.
Amanda Bennett, yes, thank you. Um, Amanda Bennett's term expired and she let us know that she would not be re-upping. Um, so we have two vacancies on the planning commission. We advertised the vacancies all through the month of May and we had two.
Um, so we have two vacancies on the planning commission. We advertised the vacancies all through the month of May and we had two applicants. Uh, Greg Hoeksmo re-appplied for his position, so he will be one of the candidates, and then Allison Snodgrass has applied. As well for a vacancy, so we have two vacancies, two applicants. Um, and with our new council guidelines, we now need to form a council ad hoc committee to conduct the interviews and make the recommendations for the appointments. So at this meeting, I need council to put forward three volunteers so that we can schedule the meeting. Probably looking at doing interviews early next week so we can get this on the agenda for the twenty-seventh.
Um, and Josh, is this the first time that we've had a council committee formed or? Second time around, I'm trying to remember.
This will be our first time in this new process.
In the new process, okay.
And all the prior applicants were all interviewed by the former official boarding candidate review committee.
And you need three volunteers, right?
Yes, I need three, three volunteers.
Okay. I see Councilmember Wook's hand is raised. Any other, any two other that would like to be part of this interview process?
I would like to do it, but I can't do it on that timing.
Okay. So. I think we have to stick within that timing, correct, Josh?
Well, that would be ideal. We'd wanna get it out in the packet, which is to go out next Wednesday.
I have a clarifying question. I don't wanna confuse things by raising my hand, though, either, but. Um, I recall when we talked about this a while back, and I'm assuming that it was, you know. The council was in favor of doing these ad hoc committees, is that correct, and why we added it? Okay, so I knew that was something we weren't unanimous on as well, so. Might be why it's.
Procedurally, I mean, that, that's what's in your guidelines, and you have the option to delegate that to the mayor and have her make recommendations if. Um, we brought, we discussed that at the council guidelines portion, but that wasn't, um, something council wanted to do at the time, but that. That's a, an option that other cities use.
And, and we will have to either draw names or I'll just pick two more people if no one raises their hand, cuz we do need three people here. If you want to follow this process, then we need three people.
Could you repeat the times and days again, Josh?
Uh, we just need to do it sometime early next week, so something before Wednesday.
Well, and Monday's a holiday, so it would have to be Tuesday then, right? Or tomorrow or Tuesday? Tomorrow, Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just, I, I would pu- put myself out there, maybe, but I, I wasn't in favor of this, this style. I'd prefer that this come from the mayor, uh, but I'm out of town next week anyways, so I will be unavailable.
I could do Tuesday, late afternoon.
Okay, do we have, I feel like an auctioneer. Do we have another person for Tuesday, late afternoon?
What, I mean, council still has the option of just directing staff or the mayor to make a recommendation on these appointments, if you'd rather go that route, if we don't have enough.
And you still approve this, these people at the, uh, you know, at the council meeting, so it's up to you guys.
I say, uh, mayor and, and staff make the recommendation.
Especially since we have two openings and two people.
Yeah.
Yeah, I suggest the mayor, uh.
We already voted on this, to do it this way.
But we don't have two, we don't have enough people because of the timing, Jenny.
And we have the option.
Yeah, so this, well, it's a procedure in council guidelines, and council guidelines can be waived explicitly or implicitly by a majority of councils. So if a majority of council would like to go that route for this appointment, we can do that. Um, it doesn't have to be a permanent change, it's just, it sounds like we. Um, procedurally, it's a convenience for the city to be able to get this done.
Well, can the mayor step in and be part of the three?
Uh, not part of an ad hoc committee of council, no, it would have to be three council members.
So I say staff and the mayor.
I do as well.
Yeah, I have a fourth one.
I, I'm not available, so, and it sounds like we don't have three people.
And, and I'm not going to be available as well.
Yeah.
Either. Okay, so do you wanna say for this appointment only, it will come for me, and then we'll, the next time around, if there's other vacancies. We can see if we have more council availability at that time. And, and so then it would just be a, a temporary change for this particular appointment?
I agree with that. I, I would be glad to do it at some other time, but, uh, I have some family issues.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for being flexible, council. I appreciate that, and these, these appointments will come before you at the June twenty-seventh meeting for your approval. Um, so we'll go ahead and do it that way this time around, and then next time around, hopefully we can have. A little more advanced notice for you guys and, and we'll have three people that will be available, so.
And I will, I will forward the applications for both applicants to council, and if you have any comments, you can let them.
Yeah, please send them over to me for sure, and, um, we'll go ahead and. Make an appointment and then you can let me know what you think. Okay, great. Um, alright, well, that is all of our items and it's three nineteen. This is, this is good, everybody. We're sailing through, Councilmember Likens.
Yes, I just had a quick question. Um, I saw on the planning agenda that the transitional housing is coming up. For a vote for a first read in June, but I didn't see a study session for it. Um, and I didn't know if that was something that was just very straightforward. And that's why it was going straight to council, or if we were going to be briefed on it. I, I was just curious.
Um, councilmember Likens, the transitional housing is very similar to the last time that we discussed this with council. We were anticipating bringing it forward to council, however, if council would like to have a ten, fifteen-minute. Add to the study session, then we would be more than happy to accommodate that request.
I, not necessarily, I just was wondering if others had questions, and I don't wanna be the least popular one here. Who says on a sunny day, you all have to sit inside for fifteen minutes, but just, I, I can ask questions if I have them when I see it. So, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great. If you change your mind, let us know. Plus, it's only partly sunny today. It's been half raining and half sunny, so.
I don't know, it looks pretty gorgeous right now.
Right now, it looks pretty nice, it does.
I always wanna hang up and go out before it changes.
Yes, yes. Okay, well, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, have a good evening, everyone.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.